Bothell City Council is now in session. Could you all rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have all council members present except for Councilmember Lam, Mayor Freed, who are absent and excused, and Councilmember Sandberg, who's also absent and excused, but will be joining us by phone for one of our later agenda items. So, meeting agenda approval, is everybody okay with tonight's agenda? Councilmember Rayum.
I was hoping to add an item at the end about council meeting decorum for us to discuss.
Okay. About how long do you anticipate?
Let's give ourselves 20 minutes, probably.
All right. Councilmember Evans.
Yes, I'd like to pull from the consent agenda, agenda bill 15-016.
15-016, the consider approval for professional services on the Nicholas Madroso Park?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items on consent to be pulled? No? Okay. All right, and anything on our projected agenda? Councilmember Rayum.
So, for our March, excuse me, for our March 3 meeting, I was hoping to add a topic that we could discuss, actually, it would be probably better if we approve a letter to be sent to the Wayne Golf Course owners about the purchase of the front nine, because that's the last meeting we have before our 45 days are up to respond to their, to their letter.
City manager, can we slide a, slide that item in as a response to the Richardson's letter?
Certainly up to council's discretion, but I believe the 45-day period would not expire until the 14th. So, to the extent that council would like to also consider that either on the 10th, I think that is available to you, at least by city attorney's review of when we receive the letter.
All right. Other council members? Councilmember Evans.
Maybe at that meeting on the 3rd, we could see a draft letter that explains where we're at, or what our position is, or a response back to their letter, and then if there's questions, we could discuss it in a, in a study session, and then we could actually move to the 10th if we had to go ahead and pass it, we'd have until the 10th to pass it also, I guess.
Certainly, I think, given the timeframe, we'll want to have a discussion, council will want to have a discussion about what action, if any, you would like to take
Right.
in response on the 3rd, with the possibility of then formalizing a letter by the 10th.
Right.
Whether or not a letter would, you'd be comfortable with one on the 3rd is yet to be determined, since we haven't had that discussion yet.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to have that meeting, our discussion on the 3rd, that gives us a little bit more wiggle room, because I'm sure there's going to be some things we're going to want to tweak a little bit.
Okay, sounds like we're going to add a, at least a draft letter and discussion on the 3rd. Councilmember Rayum.
I don't want to take anybody's thunder that's in the audience, but I, if we have an opportunity to talk as a council about the front nine, I think that would be good. I know this is not part, I should have said, mentioned this during the agenda setting for this meeting, but if I may, I could just like to say a couple of things. Or do you want to move on?
Why don't, why don't we go ahead, we could, we do have a special presentation and we'll move on at this point. So, anything else on the projected agenda? All right, saying nothing else, nothing else. Then, we do have a special presentation tonight, and we have with us from Wyra 8, Andy, is it Locke? Welcome.
I'm Andy Locke, and I'm a Surface Water Program Coordinator here with the City of Bothell in the Public Works Department.
Make sure the green light is on, on your mic.
It is. Can you hear me better now?
No.
No. Huh. If I turn around, can you hear me better? (laughing). Uh...
Speak louder.
Okay, I'll just speak really loud.
There you go.
So, there's a, there's a barrier here. So, anyway, I'm Andy Locke with the Surface Water Management Program here with the City of Bothell, and I'm here to introduce to you tonight the speaker for the special presentation, Jason Mulvaill Kuntz, who's the watershed coordinator for the Lake Washington, Samamish, and Cedar River watershed. He's going to give you a brief status update of the salmon recovery efforts that have been taking place over the last 10-plus years, and then he's also going to bring forward, telling you about the coming renewal for the interlocal agreement that the Salmon Recovery Council works under with, for all the different jurisdictions that are in those watersheds. So, without anything further, I'd like to introduce you to Jason.
Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, thanks, Andy, for that introduction. Can folks hear me? Yes? Okay.
Speak loud.
I will, I'll project, I've got to kind of bend down for this thing, but (laughing) we'll do it. I want to thank the deputy mayor and the rest of the council for having me here tonight. As Andy indicated, I'm Jason Mulvaill Kuntz, I'm the coordinator of salmon recovery efforts in the Lake Washington-Cedar-Samamish watershed. Let me load my presentation here quickly. My presentation tonight is twofold. One, it's to acknowledge that we are 10 years into implementing the Chinook salmon recovery plan, the plan that you all adopted, is your plan for salmon recovery in this watershed, and thought you would appreciate an update on our progress. And secondly, as Andy noted, we are nearing the end of the 10-year interlocal agreement that has enabled that regionally coordinated effort to move forward. So, want to give you guys a little bit of context for that conversation that you guys will have in the next few months to, to consider that renewal. So, here's a map, just to give you some orientation to the watershed, this is the watershed boundary. The watershed itself is broken up into tiers which prioritize the area for salmon recovery, the dark green being the most important areas, we call it Tier 1 for salmon recovery, that's where they spawn, that's where they rear their young. The lighter green areas are what we call Tier 2, those have a little bit less habitat quality for salmon, but are still very important to migrating juveniles or baby salmon. And then the grayer area is Tier 3, that's area that's, it's pretty developed, it's urban, offers less direct habitat benefit, but still very important from a water quality and water flow perspective. And then I will point to the shoreline and the Samamish River, the shoreline of both Lake Washington and Lake Samamish, and then also our marine shoreline, those are all very high priority areas for the migrating juveniles as they leave our watershed and go out to Puget Sound to, to grow into big adults. And I will say that we also have, we have two salmon populations, two Chinook populations in our watershed, one we call the Cedar Rivers population, which, as it's aptly named, goes to the Cedar River, and the other is the Samamish population that comes up into the Samamish River, into Lake Samamish, and on up into Issaquah Creek, but also enters several of the tributary streams to North Lake Washington and Lake North Creek that you guys are very aware of. So, a real quick timeline, Chinook were listed under the Endangered Species Act in 1999. At that time, under the perceived risk of third-party lawsuits, a lot of the local governments in the watershed thought, hey, you know, this is a really good opportunity for us to get together and tackle this regional issue together, have a regional solution. So, that really prompted the local governments, including Bothell, to come together and say, you know, instead of each one of us trying to tackle this individually, let's take a regional approach, it's a regional issue, salmon don't respect political boundaries, and demonstrate that we're proactively addressing this, this listing. In 2001, the jurisdiction signed the first interlocal agreement that enabled that work to happen, and in 2005, we developed the salmon recovery plan for Lake Washington-Cedar-Samamish watershed, and began implementing in 2006. In 2010, we took a five-year assessment and said, hey, how are we doing? What needs to change? What have we done successfully? And got input from many of our stakeholders, we had about 100 or more than that folk show up at REI in downtown Seattle to kind of have that summit. And now, as I mentioned, 2015, we're ending the first 10 years of that plan, the implementation of that plan, and we want to take another retrospective and see, you know, how are we doing, what do we need to do differently, and chart the course for the next 10 years. So, our plan, it's, I want to emphasize, it's not, it doesn't exist in a vacuum, it's one chapter of the Puget Sound salmon recovery plan, so there are 14 watersheds that encompass that regional plan, it's one of those. And then also, it's part of, salmon recovery is part of the Puget Sound recovery work, it's a significant portion, in fact, Bill Ruckelshaus, the first chair of the Puget Sound Leadership Council, said, salmon recovery is probably about 80% of what we need to do to recover Puget Sound, so it's well-integrated into that work as well. For leadership, salmon recovery is guided by a salmon recovery council that we have, and that includes representatives from all of the local governments that are partners to the interlocal agreement, Bothell included, and Councilmember Rayum serves on that body, plus additional stakeholders that represent a variety of interests in the watershed. This body really is critical to fostering regional collaboration and governance for this work, and it helps leverage the, the resources of individual partners at a watershed scale. So, what does that group do? Essentially, its purpose is, if you boil it down, it's really advancing a funding strategy for us, it's giving us, building capacity, supporting the education and outreach work that needs to happen, directing our implementation, and providing us with policy guidance as we move forward. So, I mentioned there were 28 local government partners into this interlocal agreement, this chart not meant for you to digest all this information, but the highlighted line there is Bothell's line, this is a cost share table for each of our 28 local government partners, you'll see Bothell pays about $1,4500 a year, this is the 2015 cost share, and that just shows you all the partners that are participating in this, and what their cost shares are. So, what is the ILA fund? What is this interlocal agreement fund? Well, it's a small staff team that I coordinate, three and a half staff, it's about coordinating that salmon recovery council plus regional coordination with state and federal agencies, it's about recovery plan implementation, we have about 1,200 actions that we need to take to implement this plan, my staff team is responsible for helping to prioritize and coordinate that effort. We track projects, we track implementation, we report out, we tell our funders, we tell you all how it's going, what we're doing, and then it's, it's about technical coordination, we want to base our actions in strong science, and we want to adaptively manage the work that we're doing as we move forward. So, this salmon recovery work, we're focused really on Chinook salmon recovery, but that work in and of itself is tied into so many other priority work that you all are very familiar with, from stormwater management to fish passage at the Ballard Locks, to noxious weed treatment, all of these efforts tie into salmon recovery, so it's really, a really well-integrated body of work. What does the plan tell us needs to be done? Well, it sets out why salmon are in trouble in our watershed, and what we need to do in order to recover them, gives us three types of actions, you have your on-the-ground habitat restoration and protection projects, it also identifies land use regulations and planning efforts that need to take place, and those are largely housed within local governments, as you can imagine, and then outreach, education, and stewardship actions that we all collectively, as a, as a watershed community, need to be working on to, to move forward. So, what have we accomplished? Here's that map of the watershed again, it's a little hard to see, I apologize for that, but there are red and blue dots on this map to show you the completed and active projects, we have about 100 projects that are either in completed status or actively being implemented right now. You'll see that that's, we're only 22, 22% of the way completed with our plan, almost 10 years in, in that 10-year start list, and that's not because we don't know what we need to do, it's largely because the resources that we anticipated would be available for this work have not panned out the way that the plan hoped that they would, so it's really a resource-constrained issue. And speaking of resources, here's the, the funding numbers, as I mentioned, we've got 100 projects in completed or active status, since 1998 through last year, we have implemented over $15 million of local King Conservation District or King County Flood Control District funds to this work, which has leveraged a tremendous amount, up to $28 million of state and federal funding, so it really draws in a lot of other funding sources. In that same period, we've allocated nearly $20 million of state and federal funding, so we managed two, annually, two grant rounds, one of a local funds and one with state and federal funding to, to implement projects at about $2 million a year. And as I mentioned, our plan goal is on the left column there, you'll see it's pretty ambitious, and then that's each year from there is how we've done to meet that goal, and obviously, we've fallen well short, except for notably in 2013, the legislature allocated a significant amount of money to one of our projects, and I will say there's reason for optimism that that may be, may take place more often as we move forward, as the legislature identifies multiple benefit types of projects that they want to see happen, projects that can address habitat, flood risk reduction, stormwater management in one project, so we're hopeful. What does all that investment mean on the ground, in terms of the habitat itself? Well, it's, we've restored about 2,600 acres, or protected 2,600 acres through acquisitions or easements, we've restored over 450 acres of riparian area, nearly a mile of levees have been pulled out or set back on our river systems, and over 73 acres of floodplain have been reconnected, and over 8,000 feet of the lakeshore on Lake Washington and Lake Samamish has been restored. For Bothell, here's, I pulled out a few tidbits that might be really germane to your, your work, specifically the Samamish River and small streamside restoration is critical for this work. You guys have a significant portion of the Samamish River, as well as North Creek in your jurisdiction, making sure that those streams and that river have significant streamside vegetation that offers shade, food sources, refuge, reduces erosion, and it also helps to manage stormwater, is really critical to salmon recovery. In particular, right now, you've got a significant project, Samamish River Side Channel work that's going on right now, that we have funded with several of our grants, it's in design phase right now, and we anticipate that to come forward for construction in the next couple of funding cycles. As well as North Creek protection and restoration, we've, we've funded several grants on that creek as well, so Snohomish County in particular has done one, you have a folder in front of you that has some additional project information that I wanted to make you, provide to you, and one of those projects that's highlighted is that, a project on North Creek by Snohomish County. And then in moving, removing invasive species and replanning with native vegetation is, is an important action that, that we need to do more of on these streams. So, it's really up to all of our communities to decide whether we want to have salmon in our, in our streams moving forward. Salmon recovery, we face a lot of challenges moving forward, we, we need public support, we face political will challenges, we, obviously, the adequate funding, as I mentioned before, is critical, and then there's uncertainties related to climate change and ocean conditions that are really going to play, play a role in how well we are able to restore the, and recover the salmon, but also land use pressures, as you all are keenly aware of, our development is critical to how our streams are going to function in the future. But I really want to emphasize that local governments working together makes a huge difference, and this body, the Salmon Recovery Council, this watershed, has been held up as a model, not only for Puget Sound and the state of Washington, but also nationally for how you implement endangered species recovery. So, what's next? As I mentioned, the interlocal agreement is coming up for renewal at the end of this year, so I'm making presentations to all of our partner local governments to give you guys context for what we've done, and you'll see the, the draft document come forward, if you haven't seen it already, in the next couple of months for your review, and then we hope to have by July, a final document to come to you for, for signature between July and December. And with that, I'll leave you with some pretty pictures and ask if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions? Councilmember Agnew.
So, you were saying that you've acquired quite a bit of land? I think there's about 70 people behind you that are very interested in that.
I thought they were all here for the salmon recovery presentation.
Well, they are. Indirectly, they are.
(inaudible).
What kind, what acquisitions have you made so far?
Well, a number, 2,600 acres is a, is a significant amount, we've done work in the Cedar River, we've done a lot of headwaters protection projects on Bear Creek, there's been a substantial amount of Cedar River work that's been done, unincorporated King County, the city of Seattle has incorporated, or acquired a lot of property on the Cedar River as well, to set back the levees there, let the river have more room to spread out, to reduce flood risk, that's happened to a lot of the communities in that area. We've done a lot on Issaquah Creek, almost 80% of that watershed has been protected, the upper part of Issaquah Creek, and then we've done, Bear Creek has had significant acquisitions in the past several years.
I think you need to talk to a couple of these people behind you, I'm sure they would like to get some information on trying to acquire some of this land.
Well, I will say, if I'm understanding, it's the Wayne Golf Course that folks are here for, that...
4,600 feet of waterfront.
That, on the Samamish River, that, that project is very consistent with the goals and the objectives that we have in our salmon recovery plan, so a project like that would rank fairly highly if the intent would be to protect and restore it for open space and habitat.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Any other questions?
(applause) The best reception I've had.
Councilmember Rayum.
I just wanted to say, I work with Jason quite a bit, he's, he's a great guy, and one of the things that's interesting about Wyra 8 compared to other, so Wyra is a water resource inventory area, and there's other ones like the Skagit River, you know, and these places that are a lot less developed, and what's unique about our watershed, Wyra 8, is the, most people, well, it's the most populous watershed in the state of Washington, so we have a really interesting dilemma to try to bring, or to try to have salmon still live here where it's the most populous watershed in the state, and so, we do, we do a lot of work on Wyra 8, and I think it's, it's really important, I think that if we have salmon disappear from this watershed, it'll be a shame, because, well, it's the most populous watershed, and so that's the most votes in the legislature, it's the most people that would interact with nature, children would have it, opportunity to be around, you know, a healthy creek with salmon spawning in it, those things definitely developed who I am as a person, and I grew up in Bothell, so I hope the future generations have the same opportunity.
Great. Councilmember Evans.
Following up on that, just to, on your one chart that you showed, all the different cities that participate and projects they've had funded and that type of thing.
Yes.
I think you had the population of Bothell listed at 40,000, which was the case before our annexation, so I think we're closer to 46,000 now, so...
That's good to know, we do update that every three years, or when we have a major annexation, so the next time we do that, which will probably be at the end of this year, that number will...
Okay, great, thank you.
Great. Well, salmon recovery is probably the most difficult of a lot of species to, to bring back, but it was a bright light in the newspaper today to see that down in Oregon, they have a minnow population that they're getting ready to take off of the endangered species list, so it can be done, a lot of work ahead still. Thank you very much for your presentation, Jason, and we look forward to seeing the ILA come later on in the year.
Great, thank you all, and we really appreciate Bothell being part of it.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have our visitors' portion of the meeting, just would like to remind everybody that you have, there's three minutes, and if you go over, you are take, you know, taking into potentially somebody else's time, so please direct your comments to the council as a whole, and not to individuals, and, let's see here, we've got some sign-up sheets, first, I have Steve Jarvis.
Can I go third?
Can you go third?
(inaudible).
Okay, well, I will put you, I will put you back in here, how about James McNeil?
I think Jesse's going to go first.
All right. Well, we're going to go to Jesse Sears then.
Deputy Mayor, thank you for accommodating that shuffle of speakers, so, first off, I just want to tell you thank you for everything that you guys are doing, and I want to say thank you for everybody for showing up tonight and showing support for, for what we're trying to do. I've given you guys a printout, on that printout, some talking points that James and I and one Bothell put together, and then also kind of a list of, of some questions on the back page that we have, and some, some directions that we're hoping to, to be able to go and get some, and some answers that we're hoping to, to get. More than anything tonight, I just wanted to tell you how excited I am to be a part of a community like Bothell. I moved here in 2011, I was looking for a place to live that I thought that I could be a part of a community and, and raise my family in, and I, I came across Bothell, and when I came into that valley and saw the river flowing through it, and the vision of what, of the open space areas, and, and the direction that the city was going with their downtown projects, I was absolutely amazed, I mean, to have a place like we have and have an opportunity to save a place like the open recreational area of Wayne's Golf Course is absolutely phenomenal. You know, I, we're just so lucky to actually be sitting here today, talking about this land, and, and the ability of trying to problem-solve a way of saving it for future generations. I, I can't tell you about how excited I am about the future of Bothell, and the future of the downtown corridor, and how it correlates to the recreational area of, of this area. You know, I can see an area where we, you know, kayak rentals and stand-up paddleboards rentals are coming down into the Wayne's Golf Course area that, to have a recreational corridor down there, an area where we have a mountain bike shop in downtown for the mountain biking trails that are, that are behind Blythe Park and behind Wayne's, the back nine of Wayne's Golf Course, and I hope that we can come together as a community and as a city to find a way of saving this precious resource, not only for the environmental impacts, but also for the recreational impacts and the economic impacts of our, of our city. We have something special here, we've got the, the community behind it, and I think we have the city behind it, and I'm really looking forward to the future that we have working together, trying to, to come to an agreement on this, and to be able to save this area for the future. I just wanted to say thank you for all your work, and thank you to the city for all their work, too.
Great. Thank you, Jesse.
Yeah.
All right. Would Steve or James like to jump up then?
(laughing).
Or do you guys want a Roger and Bo for this one?
Yeah, I want to ditto what Jesse said, I want to thank all of you guys, city staff, for all their help, it's been a journey so far, I'm proud to be a part of this journey, I've been, as I've told you guys before, I've been a member of the community for 49 years, and Bothell is near and dear to my heart, and my wife as well, and my family, so being honored with the ability to go down and represent the community and the voices that we're hearing from, from the community on how important Wayne land and golf course is to us, is a pretty special thing, and I, and I hope that everybody in the community knows how much we do appreciate the community, because it's going to take all of us to make this work. We understand what the value could mean to our community, and not very many communities could have something like this, where you have a Blythe Park that ties into a big open recreational space on the back, that ties into a front-nine conservation easement, it's really, really cool, Burt Gimlin Trail, as Jesse said, you could have paddleboards, kayaking, all the wonderful things for a community to enjoy right here in our backyard, we have that, not too many cities can say they have that. I'm honored that the state and the county have stepped up and offered to help our city, that's a really cool thing, that, you know, community group was able to get in front of them and go down to Olympia and say, hey, we're here, and they're willing to help us. We, we did offer a list of a few things that we had questions on, just to make sure if you guys, you know, if there's something we can do more, let us know, but I think it's really important that we follow through and make the offers that, you know, that we have to make in the 45-day timeframe, and we do the things, it's important to make sure that we stay the course to try to acquire this land for our community in perpetuity forever, so that all of us with children, grandchildren, can all enjoy it the way those before us could. So, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, James. Steve Jarvis.
My name is, I've been, I'm speaking as for myself and as a concerned citizen of Bothell, not for one Bothell, even though I'm friends with most of these people. On Friday, February 13, I attended the meeting in Olympia that one Bothell had with the elected officials of the state of Washington. The purpose of this meeting was to ask these officials to help find money for the purchase of all or part of Wayne Golf Course. Bothell officials were conferenced into the meeting by telephone in the spirit of cooperation and openness. During the meeting, Councilman Lamb became rude and aggressive towards the speakers...
Excuse me, Mr. Jarvis, it's our, it's our protocol not to single out council members with your comments.
Okay, I was trying to tell you a little bit about the meeting and what happened.
I, I... I, I understand, but we do have a, we do have a protocol that we adhere to, and it's.
In the interest of protocol, thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Anders Liddell. I hope I got that right.
Close enough. Hey, so, all right. I was just told to talk, so I'm gonna talk. I'm gonna say what's on my mind. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. Basically, I, I see our green space as something that's, you know, really essential, and you know, the fact that it's disappearing, I find, or, or there's an opportunity for it to disappear, I find that kind of disconcerting. I frequently visited Blythe Park when I was a lot younger. Basically, you know, basically from the, the time that I, I got a dog, I would, you know, cross the street and, you know, go down to Blythe, and you know, we'd have a lot of fun there. And, you know, I engaged with, you know, other community members there as well. You know, I'd have friends down there, and you know, we, it was a place for us to socialize. And now that I'm a little older, I'm 18 now, I'm seeing a lot more traffic on the roads, caused by, you know, more houses and green space, you know, disappearing. And I see that the kids in our neighborhood are not allowed to cross the street anymore to get a, you know, get to Blythe Park and access this green area that we have. So, you know, what's my point? I just see, you know, that because of, in other areas, we have large spaces, you know, these large green areas disappearing, we are faced, you know, with a choice here of like either isolating our communities, or, you know, opening them up. And I would choose to, you know, have them, you know, continue to be open by, you know, making these areas accessible to the public instead of, you know, residential areas. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have, is it Sandy Alto? Alto?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is the first time, actually the second time in my 25 years in Bothell, that I have had an opportunity to work with the council. I only learned about One Bothell a week ago, and in that time, I thought to myself, One Bothell, it should be Make Bothell Number One. It should be Make Bothell Number One. Every great city has a great park. Every great city. Kirkland has its waterfront. I hate them for it. Matthews Beach has the beach I have to get on my bike and ride down to. Bothell Landing has the Norman Rockwell Park of this county. It does. That's what I think of. That's when I thought, when I first moved here. I was like, oh my God, this is adorable. And it's growing, and it has to grow. It should grow. Every great city grows. We've got so much property right now that has to go up. It's gotta go up. And hopefully it won't have an earthquake to take it down, but it's gotta go up. But the park doesn't have to go up. Wayne Golf Course doesn't have to go up. Everyone I know that I've spoken to in the last week, and for those on One Bothell, they may have noticed that the petition numbers jumped quite a bit in the last three days. Because I've talked to bicycle clubs, I've talked to conservationists, I've talked to people in wheelchairs at the senior center, I've talked to paddlers, I've talked to conservationists, people that care about water, people that care about natural capital, natural capital. Development doesn't always make your taxes go down. It may make, it may make individuals prosperous as, as, you know, because they have more customers. But development also raises our taxes. And conserve land doesn't necessarily do that. In fact, I'm sure, if you gave me another week, I'd probably be able to figure out what the natural capital is of Bothell Landing, from the trees that it gives us, the salmon that it provides us, the entertainment that it gives us, and the serenity that it provides. So, I think about making Bothell Number One. And I think about what I would love to see from the city. I had a nice conversation with Mr. So today. But I believe that what we need is a demeanor here of we can do it. We can do it. So it's mindset, and it needs to come from the city council, because goodness knows, everybody here says we can do it. And I don't really know how that's gonna happen. Our county wants it, other cities are behind it, our state senator, Rosemary, and, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Alto. Next I have Sandy Gwynn.
With the room full of people, I just want to say I also support One Bothell and Bothell Number One. I'm coming here tonight to talk about the regional fire authority. At the last council meeting, council had asked for a comparison of what the cost would be for Bothell citizens with and without an RFA. I respectfully request that this review also include the following. One, revenue that the city receives that helps pay for our fire services that the regional fire authority is not able to receive. An example includes the EMS transport fees projected to be $720,000, and EMS transport fees from Fire District 10 projected to be $132,500 in the 2015-2016 budget book. Currently, Bothell, being a city, can bill and charge for transport fees, and we charge through the insurance companies, and our citizens don't pay what the insurance company doesn't pay unless something has changed, since I was on council. An RFA cannot charge currently for a transport fee, and if I'm incorrect on this, please tell me. Number two, list revenues that the currently receive, city currently receives that help pay for fire services, such as fire plan review fees projected to be $120,000, and fire suppression system review projected to be $110,000 in the 2015-16 budget. Other fees are fire alarm fees, motor vehicle accident fees, development services, land use, and building review hourly fee rate, which I believe was just instituted this year. And then finally, increased valuation and the tax revenue that Bothell would receive with, out an RFA, and with an RFA. I think if you're gonna do a comparison, you really need to look at all sides of it, expenditures and revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gwynn. All right, that's the end of our sign-up sheets. Is there anybody else that would like to come up to the podium and speak? Come on up and state your name, please. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you. I'm Pat Pierce, and just for Pat Parker's, because this is a longstanding joke between she and I, Pat Pierce, 10,001 Northeast 190th. It's a long story. I didn't mean to get up and speak, but Sandy Alto reminded me of something very important. Back when she got involved with the city, we had an interim city manager for a while, and his name was Al Locke, and guess where he was from? Kirkland. And he said that one of the best things Kirkland had ever done was to obtain as much waterfront as they could, that it was actually one of the best things they had done for the entire community. And Kirkland ends at the waterfront, and then the large part of Kirkland spans out behind. And so, I often look at things so that, you know, we look at the whole city when we do things, but I think in this case, you really can look at the whole city, because you, you've got the, the trail, you've got the wetlands that we have, the park at Bothell Landing, Blythe Park. It's, it's just an enormous asset to the community and to the region. And the, when, after Al left, and we got a new city manager, whose name was Ann Flug, we actually went into negotiations with the Richards to be able to, you know, purchase the back nine, if possible, when it came up for sale. And I'd hate to walk away from that, but apparently the city may have, so. All I wanted to say is, please, 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 look at the whole area, the front nine, the back nine, and the four acres, because it would be an enormous asset. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pat? Pat? I did believe somebody has a question for you? Oh, I'm, no. Councilmember Agnew.
Well, it looked like Robert Contreras wanted to say something.
Yep, sure. Could you state your name for the record?
Excuse me. I just want to share some experiences that, this is the right height for me, by the way. I'd just like to share some experiences that I have had on the slough. I moved there in 2000, and I have a fairly intimate relationship with the waterway, and that I'm a kayaker. And so I'm kayaking at least 25 times a year, and that's for 15 years. And what I've seen on the slough, is I've seen, and this is kind of a following-up of what Jason said, the slough may be hurt, but it's not broken yet. And what I've seen on the slough in my time is beaver, otter, muskrats, gray herons, numerous species of duck, and of course geese, many geese. There's an eagle that lives right across the street from the river on the back nine, and from my house, I can see its nest, and it has raised at least four hatches of eaglets. It's exciting to see that. It's flying by my house, basically to, you fish on the creek. The other thing that I wanted to share with you, is you don't, you don't see too many fish, but there's a lot of big fish going up the, going up a river, and going up the hatchery into Lake Somamish. And while I'm, this has probably happened to me about 10 times, but I'm sitting there in the fall kayaking, and all of a sudden, there's a big thump, and something's popping the bottom of my kayak. And I look around, there's nothing underwater, basically a salmon that are big enough, 30-pound salmon, 35-pound salmon, 25-pound salmon, that come up and scratch the back on the kayak. And that's, that's my experience. And it's a beautiful area, and I encourage your strongest efforts to protect it.
Excuse me, sir, sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
Robert Contreras, 16507 Baldur Lane.
Great, thank you so much. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am. Oh, yeah, we, we, you, and then we've got one right behind you.
I didn't come to, prepared to speak tonight, but my name is Mary Farley, and I have lived here for 62 years. And I want to tell you that the Somamish River keeps getting better in many, many ways, and Bothell keeps getting better because of the way that we've treated the river and the golf course. My, my brothers went and collected golf balls for $0.50 a bucket when they were growing up. And that's all people did, was pretty much play golf behind trees, and you really couldn't see the golf course that much. It's so beautiful now. You wa, you look across the valley, and you see it blooming up on the hill. In the spring, it's pink, and in the fall, it's full of fall color. And the river, I, I count salmon for the Salmon Watcher program, and I saw two Chinook go up the North Creek this year, which was a first for me. We have so much potential, we have so much invested, and it belongs to all of us, and we really, really need to try and save it. But I want to, I really want to make sure that we don't make the owners of the golf course the enemies, because they've been working hard for years to take care of that place. And they will be happy, I'm sure, to see it preserved and taken care of for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sharon Dimmitt. I live 10308 Northeast 186th Street, in a 110-year-old house that I'm still remodeling. Everybody has said all these wonderful things about the river and, and Bothell, and that. But I want to say something about all the people who are here. This is just a very small part of the people who want to get behind Bothell, and to, to help Bothell become what we really want it. We don't want to be Bellevue, we don't want to be Kirkland, we don't want to be Mill Creek, we want to be Bothell. And I think that the more that the council can give us good feedback, the more that we can, you know, show you that we are, I think you probably see that we're, some of us are serious, the more that we can work together, the better it will be. And like Russell Wilson says, why not us, you know? Why not us going out and doing something that maybe some people say is kind of hard to do, but why not us? Let's go get it.
Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak? Yes. Could you please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Paula Liddell, and I lived in this community for almost 60 years, and everybody's said so many nice things about Bothell, but I have seen so many changes. Trees coming down, houses going up, traffic has tripled. Even some of the improvements in Bothell I haven't been elated about, but all I wanted to say is, this is now the time to do the responsible thing for our community and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and say a few words? Yes, sir. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Odedeliada, from 16130 Valhalla Drive. Recently, I've arrived to Bothell, something like two months ago, and before that, I lived in Israel, very far away, but the same decisions are made there on a daily basis, whether we keep nature or we develop. And I wanted to leave the experiences in the city that I lived in, it's Tel Aviv. They made a project that might seem not economically really viable, and they left the coastline pretty clear. There was a period that they built there, and they regret about it a lot. And since then, they built there all kinds of parks, and places where you can walk by the river, and it's quite wide. And people from around the country go there for a place where they can walk, enjoy the stroll, go have a nice café, maybe do a little bit of shopping, and without using their cars or something like that. It's a beautiful experience, and it's something that would be beautiful for the entire region, I would say, to come to this beautiful park that has small shops there, if it's not a golf course, of course. And kind of, it's something that's beautiful to the eye, and also economically viable. So there are alternatives, even if a golf course isn't economical, there is an alternative that is for the benefit of the community and for the people, of course, that own the land. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and say a few words? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jana Schwartz.
Why don't you state your name for the mic?
Sorry. Can you hear me okay?
There you go.
My name is Jana Schwartz. My husband, John, and I moved here in December. And we drove around the areas, and we'd been looking for a place to downsize to. We went to Redmond, we looked around Seattle, horrible. As I saw this place in River Park, which is right across from Blythe Park, and fell in love with it. We took the realtor out there, and bam, we bought, we bought it right away. And it was the green space. And something the previous speaker just said that makes me think of the economy of Seattle, and how much this area, this whole region relies on the tourist industry for its economy. It brings a lot of dollars in. That is something that the previous speaker That is something that the previous speaker really touched on, that in Tel Aviv, I mean, it's definitely known as a vacation area for Israel. Why not make that part of the growth plan for Bothell? We've got a really cute downtown, and I know that we want to renovate it. I mean, look at your logo. What's your logo? It's the river, right? So it-- there really is a real economic opportunity here to bring more people in, have them shop, have them use our restaurants. It will happen, because it's already natural to walk across the river. I've done it a number of times since we've lived here and gone into downtown and spent money. So I think that that's something that we could use as a real strong benefit financially for saving this area. Thank you.
Great, thank you.[648.41][648.41](APPLAUSE). Is there anybody else I'd like to come up and say a few words? Going once? Twice?
Can I call again?[664.12][664.12](LAUGHTER).
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your thoughts and your words with us tonight. Councilmember Agnew.
You know, it just does my heart good to see all you people here. I think grassroots efforts do work, and I think you're a testament to that. I think what you heard here tonight from the Why We're Eight people is there's funding available. I lived here 30-some years, and I live, and most of you are my friends, you live in Valhalla, if not right across the way. We all moved there for the view. We all moved there for the river. I hope we can accomplish this goal. I will do everything I can possibly do to help you out, up to and including some financial support. I can say that now because my wife's gone.[721.82][721.82](LAUGHTER). I think you're on the right track. I think you're doing a great job. Keep it up. We can do this. Somebody said it earlier, why isn't Bothell number one? One Bothell, Bothell number one. I think we can do this. I love what you're doing. How can I help? Thank you.[742.63][742.63](APPLAUSE).
So, I too, I really appreciate a public-- a group that organizes itself and interacts with the pub-- with the city, because we are the city. We don't get that very often, so it's really, really important and critical to us and informs us about what the public wants. I did attend, I drove down to Olympia with one Bothell members just to show my support. And, you know, the message I got at the end of that was basically, give us a number so we can put it in the capital budget, no guarantees. But they did say that. And, you know, I-- all the time I've been doing this, I've never, I've never went and sat down with all three legislators and, I don't know, half a dozen other aides to other legislators from other districts from-- other than ours. And, you know, it was really, it's really been inspiring to see this group work. And, you know, the King County is also involved, you know, Jason was here, but they also have other people that have been involved, they've contacted us. And I really hope we can make it work. You know, we don't, I've said this at the last meeting, we don't have millions of dollars kind of sitting around that we could just go ahead and use to purchase some property. We would be overtaxing you if that was the case. So, we don't have it, and I hope that we can communicate with the Richards that we're interested. I, you know, I don't know where the majority of the council is at, but you definitely have my support in pursuing this with the property owners, and hopefully the back nine's not too late, it's not too late for the back nine as well as the front nine. So, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Evans.
Well, I think the North Creek Forest people have been one-upped. I think Bothell One has, or One Bothell has really generated a lot of interest. We appreciate that. Very seldom do we have a full chamber of people here, so it's good to have you here. I appreciate your input. And I, what Councilmember Ream mentioned was, I wish we had unlimited funds to do a lot of these things. We don't, you know that. You've, some of you have heard of some of the other issues that we're dealing with in the city. So, I want to give the, I don't want to give the impression that we don't want to do this, because I think all of us do, there's no question about that. But we certainly have to work with the other items that we're looking at in our budget, the other things we have to fund, and fit this all together. So bear with us, it's going to take us a little bit of time to, to look at all the different options and things, but I think it's very safe to say that everyone on this council, certainly I'm willing, and I think you've heard from three of the others, that we want to work to get this done. It may not come out exactly the way we want it or the way everyone wants, but I'm certainly willing to work to get it done also, realizing that we have a lot on our plate. And we do want this to be, I've lived here since 1970, so I've been in the community a long time, too, raised my family here. I love Bothell. So, but since I've been on the council, I've realized there's, and I'm a Parks and Recreation guy, I love parks, I built parks, that was my profession. So I'm very supportive of that. But I realize that there's other things that we, in this city, that we have to think about, and some of you have heard about those. And so we're looking at all of those, but this is certainly a key issue that we'll be looking at, too, and doing all we can to, to, to save this area, protect it, and we'll see where we go from here in the future. But thank you again for coming and all of your interest in things. We'll, we'll be working on it, believe me. Thank you.[981.00][981.00](APPLAUSE).
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing your words and your comments, as I've expressed with some of your, some of your membership or your brothers-at-arms, if you will, that I am supportive of this. And there's, Councilmember Evans mentioned the North Creek Forest folks. I think that they had a great attitude and plan and system that worked, and they were able to accomplish not just the initial property, piece of property that they were looking at, but they were, they were able to accomplish assembling several pieces of property. And so I would, I would look to them for leadership and guidance. I know there's council members up here that would love to meet with you and the North Creek Forest folks also, to, to put the plan that they used and, and take it to the One Bothell organization and move forward. I, it's a, it's got a proven track record at this point, and our staff has worked with the North Creek Forest folks, and as a result, we've been successful on that green space over there. So I think by doing a similar strategy that this could work on the golf course properties and that open space over there. So again, I want to thank you all for being here and sharing your comments, and with that, we need to move on. So thank you again.[1081.00][1081.00](APPLAUSE). So next up on our agenda would be our consent agenda, and we have AB 15-016 polled by Councilmember Evans.[1095.03][1095.03](LAUGHTER). Yeah, Bothell City Council going to recess for five minutes.[1121.13][1121.13](LAUGHTER). Bothell City Council is now back in session. Before we move to our consent agenda, I want to take a moment to recognize a tragedy that happened to our Bothell family. This past weekend, Tim Kyle, who served with the city of Bothell for over 20 years, was tragically killed in an automobile accident near his home up in Woodby Island. And we, his wife, Mary Jo Kyle, served for over 25 years with the fire department here in town, and obviously the family's going through a difficult time at this point. So I just, I know I, myself and my family will be keeping the Kyles and our thoughts and prayers, and I ask that you all do the same. And right now, I'd just like to take and have a moment of silence for Tim. All right, we are now to our consent agenda, and we had AB 15-016 polled by Councilmember Evans. Do I have a motion for the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Agnew, second by Councilmember Evans. Because of a seating arrangement change-up, we'll be going by voice, voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I pulled this item because I had a few questions, but I also had an ulterior motive also. But just quickly, the questions, so in phase one, well, I noticed in, on page 44, it talks about the site plan and, or it talks about, let me get there, what's going to be covered here under general, survey, layout plan, restroom plans, and elevations and things. We're not actually designing the restroom, we're doing, is that a site plan that's just going to show all these, where these items will go on the site?
Correct. It'll be a prefab building, most likely. The restroom would be a prefab.
But, but we're not building it in this first phase, is that correct?
That's our assumption. With the limited funds, we just don't see how we can get that piece in there.
Okay. That was one question. The other question was, makes reference to the permitting being completed in four weeks. Is that possible? To get a permit in four weeks for park development? I hope so. That's what we got in the contract. If it takes longer than four weeks, it's going to cost us a little bit more, but hopefully that's within reason in our permitting process.
You're not building the structure, so it's really a grading permit?
Right.
For the most part?
Yeah, really no structures, some utilities, that type of thing. So hopefully that's doable. So, the items that will not be constructed in this first phase, my understanding, is the restroom building, the tennis courts, the lighting of the tennis courts, I think, and the memorial, will not be constructed in this phase, is that correct?
Correct.
So, do we have funding for the restroom, the tennis courts, and the memorial at some, or is that, do we have funding for that in the future?
No.
So what are we looking at cost-wise there to do those? Probably a minimum of $100,000, I would guess?
Probably, at least.
So, we're talking about park improvements and everything that we like to do, but just want everyone to remember there's cost to all of these things, and hopefully at some point, we'll be able to budget for these items or find a way to fund them, because it would be nice to complete the park.
If I could just address the memorial real quickly. The family has been doing some fundraising, they have, under the Names Foundation, and they do a fund run every year. And so last year, they donated $5,000 to the city that's been set in trust for the memorial. And our hope is that, we want them involved in that memorial and what it looks like, as well as to understand the costs for us to get that part in, so hopefully they can, that'll give them some ability, once we get the park going, that they can raise some more funds for that.
Okay. But, but all of those things, there'll be, in the plan sheets, there'll be a site plan that shows the potential locations of all of these items. But some of them just won't be designed or constructed in this space.
Correct.
Okay, great. With that, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the contract with Berger Associates in the amount of $78,985.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Evans and a second by Councilmember Agnew. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Evans.
Well, as long as we got Pat up here, I just would like to, how long have you been with the city, Pat?
31 years as a full-time employee and 35 total.
Okay. And what have you done during that 31 years mainly?
How many titles was it, Aaron?
What's been your main purpose?
Parks and Recreation.
Okay, that was my point. We've got, we've got an employee, I guess we could call her Miss Parks or something in Bothell. She's had her fingers in a lot of things in this city, and we have Pat to thank, along with many others, for many of the, for the park system we have today. And I just, I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize her. I think this is the last time that she'll be before us in the council, so I wanted to give her a little bit of a bad time, but decided not against that. But I did, I did want to thank her. She's been, I think, a great employee for the city and just has been our Parks and Recreation system and developed it. So, we wish you the best as you sail off into the sunset, wish we were going with you, but we'll be here and keep the fires burning. So thanks again for all you've done.
Thank you.[1551.62][1551.62](APPLAUSE).
Any further discussion? Councilmember Ream.
Hey, Pat, I just wanted to say that we talk to, you know, residents a lot around the city, and I've heard nothing just but wonderful things about you. So, I really appreciate you representing the city, and you've done a fantastic job in my eyes, and I wish you the best on your new journey.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. All right. Well, Pat, thank you so much for your, your 35 years, and you and Randy, enjoy yourselves.
Thank you.
So, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next up on our agenda would be to consider appointments to the Arts Commission. What we will be doing now, in preparation for that, we'll be contacting Councilmember Samberg, who asked to be part of this discussion. So we'll start that process now.[1626.26][1626.26](PHONE RINGING).
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Samberg, this is Deputy Mayor Spivey. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, can everybody else hear Councilmember Samberg okay? It appears so. So, we are now at AB 15-019, consider appointments to the Arts Commission, and we have Kathy Oser to give a brief presentation. You're up.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. So tonight, we're considering appointing members to the ad hoc Bothell Arts Committee. In 2009, council passed ordinance 2013, which provided that enabling action for you to appoint members to this committee. We did a little bit different outreach for this. It is an ad hoc committee, therefore it's different than a standing board or commission. As such as an ad hoc committee, we reached out to people, almost like a job recruitment in a way, we reached out to people with specific arts backgrounds and requested, oopsie. Oops, and requested that they apply if they were interested. Many times throughout the boards and commissions routines, we sometimes get zero to maybe three or four people applying after putting out a call to residents in the city. This time, we had nine people that were interested, five of which submitted the requested biographies, and their bios are submitted to you tonight in your packets. Any questions?
Councilmember Samberg, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Evans.
Maybe not questions as much as comments. This is, quote, "an ad hoc committee." We don't have a formal arts commission like we do a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board or Planning Commission, whatever the case may be.
Correct. This committee will sunset once their task is finished, unless council decides something different for them in the future.
Well, I, I think as this city is moving forward in so many areas and development and that types of things, and I believe we-- We don't have a formal arts commission like we do a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board or Planning Commission, whatever the case may be.
Correct. This committee will sunset once their task is finished, unless council decides something different for them in the future.
Well, I, I think as this city is moving forward in so many areas, and development and that types of things, and I believe we do have a 1% for the art that is applied to capital projects, is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And so, that is going to be generating some funding for us in the future. So, I, and, and we are growing. We're a city of forty-six thousand now, and we're moving forward in a lot of different ways. I would like, at some point in the future, whenever the time is right, that we form an actual arts commission in the city, just like we do with our other commissions and advisory boards and things. I think we're going to have more opportunities to have input. Hopefully, we'll get into a cultural arts program to some degree as we continue to expand our Parks and Recreation programs. We have a funding for, for art development, improvements, construction, those types of things. So, I don't know whether that's something we bring up next year as part of the process, but I would, I would certainly like to know what would be involved in developing an official arts commission for our city that can be here for the future and to take care of these things. So, I fully support what's, what this committee has been asked to do, and I think it's a great start to, in the future, forming a permanent arts commission, that hopefully this council, at some point, we can do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Second.
Have a motion to approve the recommended action by Councilmember Evans, second by Councilmember Agnew, to approve appointments of all five applicants to the first ad hoc Bothell Arts Committee, including, to include Warren Weber, Pat Pierce, Lynn Asman, Vicky Saumpe, and Michelle Wal, Waldale Dick. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Samberg by phone in the affirmative, and also the rest of us in the affirmative. So, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Samberg, for attending on this subject.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, and enjoy the rest of your trip.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, bye-bye. Okay, that takes us to the end of our agenda, but we do have Councilmember Rehm asked to have a discussion. Councilmember Rehm.
Yeah, I, I got home from the council meeting last week, and, and my wife was, needless to say, rather upset with, and she wanted to come down here, and I told her I would do this instead. She, she was rather upset about the way, well, I guess I could be specific, a way, the way Councilmember Samberg is being treated by, mainly by, by Councilmember Lamb and Mayor Freed. But I, you know, I, I just, I was just hoping maybe we can have a conversation about it. I've talked to a couple of councilmembers about this, and it just seems, including Councilmember Lamb and Mayor Freed, and it just seems that we could do better as we communicate as a council. And I do think that there's, you know, there's two sides to the story. I know there's, there's a tension between Tris and those two, or Councilmember Samberg and the other two. But I, I just got to say, like, I, you know, my wife even said she was going to quote the NFL commercials that said, "No more," about domestic violence. And I'm not saying they're domestic, being domestically violent to her, but, you know, I would say she gets a pretty reasonable verbal beating every time she comes to these meetings, and I'm, I'm personally getting pretty burnt out on it. I think it makes us look bad as a city and as a, as a council, so, I don't know. I was hoping we could have a conversation on it. I know it's not a comfortable thing to talk about, but I just wanted to voice my opinion and let the public know that I do not condone or endorse or support the way this, certain members of this council are treating each other, so, that's it.
Anybody else like to weigh in? Councilmember Agnew.
I, I agree. I, I think we, we need to let our differences aside. We need to be respectful of each of us and our times on the dais, and make them meaningful. I think if we belittle each other, we belittle ourselves, we belittle the city, and we, and that's who we're representing. We're representing the citizens here. So, let's act like adults and, and move on. We have a lot of work to do, and we don't have a whole lot of time to do it. So, let's make our time meaningful on the dais.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans, any comments?
Well, I, I think this is something that maybe we need to go back to the protocol manual to start there, at least looking at how we address issues and, and how we address each other, if that's the case. I think we're all entitled to our opinion up here, and we can agree to disagree on things. Maybe it's a matter of how we do it. I know when things are said that may or may not be correct, misinformation, or, or something's not correct in, in the comments, that if a council member wants to clarify that and get that corrected, then, then we should be able to do that in a civil manner. But, but we're not all going to agree, and that's, that's okay. That's the purpose of, of having seven of us up here to discuss the topic and, and get good review. So, if, as a council, if we need to go back and look at our protocol manual and see how we handle these things individually, I'm in favor of that, if we want to do, put that on a work agenda, whatever the case may be. But it's, I understand there's going to be differences of opinions, and how those are expressed, or addressed, or something is maybe something we need to look at.
Okay, thank you. I, I agree with Councilmember Evans that a good place to start would be to, not only looking in at ourselves, but individually, but to go to the protocol manual, and it takes some time to review the protocol manual on how we're to act towards each other and, and all, and how we, and how we present. I think that this probably warrants a, at some point, a discussion of the whole council, maybe some, some team-building type exercises, maybe there's some barriers we need to break down. But I think that oftentimes, retreats are set up to help break down a lot of those barriers. And we, our retreats are working retreats. We don't go out of town, we stay in town. But maybe, maybe that's something we need to look at in the future, is, is a retreat on breaking down some of those barriers and, and doing some team-building, as opposed to a hundred percent work. So, I would, I would consider that as a possibility also. I want to thank you, Councilmember Rehm, for bringing this up. And do you have any further comments, or?
No, I'm, I think I'm okay. I, yeah, maybe that would make sense, maybe we'd bring in a third party or something. But for me personally, like, it's just, it seems to be getting worse, I guess, as the, especially this last, last handful of meetings, to the point where, and the protocol manual's a good, you know, we could look at that. I think there's some people taking more turns than others, and that kind of thing. We could look at the protocol manual and try to reel that in a bit. You know, I think, you know, we're supposed to all have an opportunity to say things up here, and it's, I feel like the whole meeting's just being overburdened by this back-and-forth argumentative, negative behavior, and it's just, it just seems like, and I'm not saying it's just one person either, I think it's going both ways and all that, and I just, I think we could do better. You know, I, I work with teams all the time, and, you know, it's not always the, you don't hand-pick people that are on your work teams, you know, and it's, it is what it is, and so you got to work with them. And I just feel like that we could, we could work better together up here, so. And I, and the four of you, you know, I, that's the weird part. I think we're all fine, you know?
It's everyone else?
Yeah, it's everybody that's not at this meeting that has the problem. So, but anyway, I, I would like it to change, and I just felt like I needed to say something, or else my wife would be down here with two little kids yelling over there at the podium, so.
All right. Well, thank you. And so, Councilmember Agnew, you had something you wanted to bring up.
There's a gentleman that is a fire commissioner for Snow Ten by the name of Jack Van Eden, that is receiving an award tonight from France for valor in his participation of the liberation of France in World War II. My hat is off to that man. He lugged around a light machine gun, trudged through from June to December through France, sat through the most bitter winter that they'd had in over forty years in that, in that area. And he's, he's receiving an award that is so well-deserved, I cannot tell you. I think everybody in this city should thank that man. If they see him, he's ninety-four years old, he's probably not going to be around that much longer, just like the rest of us. But my hat's off to him, and I think we all need to give him a nicely done, Jack.
Thank you, Councilmember Agnew. Anything else? All right. I'll take, accept a motion for adjournment. There's been motion by Councilmember Agnew, second by Councilmember Evans, to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Or adjourn.